Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, February 17th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for February 17th, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmembers Farber, Jones, Resnick, Rousell, Sprank.
Here.
Thank you. Wethel, City Manager Van Milligan, and City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
For proclamations, our first proclamation this evening is Dubuque Military Chaplains' Day.
Okay, so I believe Janet Grass is here to accept this proclamation from VFW Post 508.
Thank you for making a proclamation for Chaplains' Day. We actually honored six chaplains on February 3rd at the University of Dubuque, and I'm proud to say the last chaplain we honored was Father Schmidt from Dubuque, Iowa. So with that, we greatly appreciate the proclamation, making this history known to all, and it should stay there forever, so people know they made the final sacrifice.
Well, thanks for putting this proclamation forward. We appreciate the opportunity to provide this tribute, so thanks for being here, Janet. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas every year Chaplains' Day is a time to reflect on the service of those chaplains who made the ultimate sacrifice while serving their God and our nation, and whereas February 3rd, 2025, marks the 82nd anniversary of the sinking of the US AT Dorchester, which carried to their deaths four US Army chaplains of three faiths who stood united in prayer as the ship went down. These four chaplains sacrificed their lives by giving their life jackets to save others. The heroic deeds of Chaplains Lieutenant George L. Fox, a Methodist priest, Lieutenant Alexander D. Goode, a Jewish rabbi, Lieutenant Johnny P. Washington, a Roman Catholic priest, and Lieutenant Clark V. Poling, a Dutch Reform minister, are all inspiring examples of real brotherhood to the people of the world. And whereas, on December 7th, 1941, Navy Lieutenant, junior grade, Aloysius H. Schmidt, a 1932 graduate of Loris College, then Columbia College, in Dubuque, Iowa, heroically sacrificed his life aboard the USS Oklahoma during the Japanese attack on Pearl Harbor. Trapped in a compartment with others, he helped several sailors escape through a small porthole, and when it was his turn, chose to stay behind to save more lives. Father Schmidt was the first chaplain of any faith to die in World War II. And whereas, on May 4th, 1966, Major William Joseph Baraji, a Loris College graduate, became the first chaplain to fall in combat during the Vietnam War. Serving as a brigade chaplain, Father Baraji died in a Chinook helicopter crash, CH-47A Tale Number 6313138, from the 147th Assault Support Helicopter Company hill climbers. The crash caused by a fire in the transmission claimed the lives of all 20 onboard, including five crew members and 15 passengers from the 101st Infantry Division, 2nd Battalion, 502nd Infantry. And whereas, the Dubuque American Legion Post Number 6, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 508, Disabled American Veterans Unit Number 6, Dubuque Marine Corps League, Tri-State Women Warriors, Tri-State Vietnam Veterans Association, and University of Dubuque Reserve Officer Training Corps, the ROTC, proudly honor all chaplains who sacrificed their lives for freedom and justice, ensuring their ultimate loss was not in vain. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the third day of February 2025 as Dubuque Military Chaplains' Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and ask all residents to honor those chaplains who died in combat while serving our country. Let's give her a hand.[353.31][353.31](Applause).
Our second proclamation is Dubuque Main Street's 40th anniversary.
All right, and I think we have a number of people from Dubuque Main Street here, so I'll just ask anyone who likes to come on up to be able to accept this proclamation.
I've got a few words, all right? If I read it off here?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Well, thank you all. Good evening, members of the City Council, Mayor Brad Kavanaugh, City Manager Mike Van Milligan, and the Dubuque community at large. For those of you who may not know me, my name is David Barba. I currently have the privilege of serving as the interim director for Dubuque Main Street, and I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge this organization's 40th anniversary and its four-decade-long commitment in making downtown Dubuque the place where our community comes to life. Forty years ago, downtown Dubuque saw 55% of commercial storefronts sitting vacant and an unemployment rate of 25%, the highest in the United States at the time. And we've all heard it a million times by now, but it is then that a local billboard coined the phrase, "Will the last person in Dubuque please turn the lights off?" Throughout that time, Dubuque Main Street has served an evolving role in changing the direction of our community and the direction that our community and this billboard once saw as an inevitable fate. Through initiatives like Dubuque and All That Jazz, we've established live music as a cornerstone in our community. The Dubuque Farmers Market, which is also celebrating its 180th year anniversary, has blossomed into a hub for social engagement and local commerce. We've secured over $1 million in state funding for downtown projects through the Challenge Grant and the Open for Business Grant programs, and together with countless volunteers and supporters, we've become the longest-running urban Main Street program in the country. While this proclamation acknowledges the history of Dubuque Main Street, we can't tell the full story of Dubuque's transformation without mentioning organizations like Greater Dubuque Development, the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque, Heritage Works, the Chamber of Commerce, Dubuque Initiatives, the DRA, and Dubuque Forward, to name a few but far from all. At Dubuque Main Street, we know that no one entity can defy odds alone. We don't keep the lights on with one organization, with one vision and one brand name. It's a collective passion and love for our community that fuel each of these organizations and keeps our community moving forward. It's Main Street's state funding assistance for downtown development, the GDDC's workforce development, Dubuque Forward's green space initiatives, the historic preservation of Heritage Works and the late Dwayne Haggerty. It's millions in nonprofit funding from the DRA, the Dubuque Area Chambers, local business marketing effort events. It's all of us together that make these things happen. In conclusion, I'd like to take this opportunity to not only honor Dubuque Main Street's four decade of public service, but honor the work that all of Dubuque has led in the last 40 years. Communities like ours face no shortage of challenges in the span of four decades. Together, our organizations have accomplished great things, overcome incredible odds, and likely racked up a very expensive electric bill with those lights that were supposed to be shut off back in the 80s. While tonight we say goodnight to the past 40 years, tomorrow we will wake up and say good morning to the next. We can't wait to find out how Dubuque Main Street will be with you each step of the way to keep those lights on for years to come. Thank you.
Well, David, thank you. That was incredibly well said. I have absolutely nothing to add to that. Thank you so much for those words. That was wonderful. Thank you all for being here to accept this proclamation and for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas in the early 1980s, due to a crippling economic hardship for our two major employers, the City of Dubuque was experiencing the highest unemployment rate in the country, and the downtown first-floor vacancy rate had reached 55%. And whereas, in 1985, city officials and downtown business leaders became a pilot-public-private partnership in the inaugural Urban Main Street Program, introduced by Main Street America to seek city center revitalization through a four-point approach consisting of historic preservation design, business improvement, promotion, and organization. And whereas, in 40 years of dedicated work by Dubuque Main Street as the only continuously running urban Main Street program in America and its partners, and through technical assistance, professional development, incentive programs, cultural events, and a network of peers through Main Street America and Main Street Iowa, downtown Dubuque stakeholders have elevated the district to become a national leader for preserved historic architecture, adaptive reuse of buildings, and sustainable job growth. And whereas, this momentum is exemplified by significant achievements including more than $925 million in private investments, 539 business starts, more than $13.5 million in public investments, 236,888 recorded volunteer hours, and the creation of over 3,400 net jobs in the downtown alone alongside countless grants, awards, and recognitions. And whereas, over the past four decades, downtown Dubuque has not only become a model of revitalization, but has also flourished as a vibrant hub for cultural activities, community events, and artistic expression, enriching the lives of residents and visitors alike. And whereas, despite these successes, the work of downtown development remains incremental and requires continuous reimagining and a renewed commitment to sustain and build upon the progress made. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim 2025 as Dubuque Main Street's 40th anniversary in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and recognize the enduring efforts of Dubuque Main Street, its partners, and the broader community in transforming downtown Dubuque into a thriving, historic, and culturally rich district.[716.57][716.57](Applause). Want a picture? Yeah, come on up. Let's do it. You guys want to come in?
Sure.
Hi, Grass.
Want to come in?
How are you?
Come on in.
Oh, I have to stand.
Cameras are only so big.
Everybody says Dubuque Rock.
Dubuque Rock.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks a lot, again. Thanks for being here.
We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. Consent items can be found on pages 2 through 5 of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Do you have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? Seeing no one here. Anyone virtually?
No input.
All right, thank you. Okay, back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Next are items set for public hearing, and we have seven. First is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement, buying among the City of Dubuque, Iowa, FEH Realty LLC and FEH Associates Incorporated for March 3rd, 2025. Second is setting public hearing for a proposed development agreement between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Dubuque Racing Association Limited for March 3rd, 2025. Third is second amendment to the Dubuque Racing Association lease for March 3rd, 2025. Fourth is initiate bid process and set public hearing for the Bunker Hill Foundation Repair Project for March 3rd, 2025. Fifth is resolution of necessity for the amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2025.1, for March 17th, 2025. Sixth is resolution of necessity for the amendment of the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District Urban Renewal Plan, version 2025.2, for March 17th, 2025. And seventh is setting a public hearing for the adoption of the Public Housing Authority Five-Year Plan, 2025 through 2029, for April 7th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
We'll move on to boards and commissions. We have applicant review for the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority, Civic Center Advisory Commission, and Historic Preservation Commission, and appointments for the Airport Commission, Cable Television Commission, Community Development Advisory Commission, Equity and Human Rights Commission, Investment and Cash Management Oversight Advisory Commission, Long Range Planning Advisory Commission, and Transit Advisory Board.
All right, thank you, Adrian. All right, this is going to take us a little bit, but we've got quite a few to look at here. So our first applicant review is the Catfish Creek Watershed Management Authority, one four-year term through 2028, and one applicant, Rachel Bokey. Do we have anyone here to address us on this application this evening? Seeing no one here. Anything virtually?
Ms. Bokey did submit written input.
All right, thank you, Adrian. All right, next up then is the Civic Center Advisory Commission. We have one three-year term through 2027, and then two three-year terms through 2025, and we have three applicants: Ashley Regan, Alan Schumacher, and Sarah Tandy. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on any of those three applications? Seeing no one here. Anyone virtually?
Ms. Tandy did submit written input.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Next up, the Historic Preservation Commission, one three-year term in the Langworthy District through 2026, and then one interim term in the Old Main District, Cathedral District, and Langworthy District, sorry, just one interim term in one of those districts, I should say. We have three applicants for this: Cole Hansen, Sandy Hockenberry, and Adam Schwendinger. Do we have anyone here to address us on any of those three applications? Please, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Adam Schwendiger. I'm at 570 West 11th, and I'm applying for the Historic Preservation Commission interim position. Currently, I work at Grown and Restoration, and I have for the past six-plus years, but I've actually been involved in historic preservation probably since I was like 10 years old. So I've always had a fascination for Dubuque's older history and our buildings, and kind of a nice tribute with Main Street's 40th year. I would also like to mention that I've been wanting to get involved kind of on a government level for a while. I've been putting it on the back burner, but at the end of this past year, a good friend of mine, Dwayne Haggerty, passed, and he was one that really got me involved professionally. So I kind of owe it to him to be involved professionally, but also it's just something I've been wanting to do. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions you have, otherwise I'm looking forward to contributing to the community, so.
All right. Well, Adam, thank you very much for addressing us. Appreciate that. Any others? Anyone virtually?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to the appointments that we have. The first is the Airport Commission. So we have one four-year term through September 14th, 2028, and we have two applicants. So in this case, I will ask that Adrian call the roll, please, and we can choose the applicant we would like to appoint.
Kavanaugh.
Bob Woodward.
Jones.
Bob Woodward.
Wethel.
Bob Woodward.
Rousell.
Bob Woodward.
Sprank.
Bob Woodward.
Farber.
Bob Woodward.
Resnick.
Bob Woodward.
So Bob Woodward is appointed to the four-year term through September 14th, 2028, on the Airport Commission. Cable Television Commission, we have one three-year term through July 1st, 2027, and one applicant, Tom Eckerman. In this case, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell.
I move to appoint Tom Eckerman to the Cable Television Commission for a term through July 1st of 2027.
Second.
Got a motion by Rousell, and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Tom Eckerman is appointed to the Cable Television Commission. Next, the Community Development Advisory Commission, we have one three-year term through February 15th, 2026, and then one three-year term through February 15th, 2028. That first term is a low-to-moderate-income representative term. In this case, we have one low-to-moderate-income representative, Thelma Brown, and then one representative for the other term, Michelle Hinke. So in this case, I will also entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that Thelma Brown and Michelle Hinke be appointed to the qualifying positions on the Community Development Advisor Commission.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Thelma Brown and Michelle Hinke are both appointed to the Community Development Advisory Commission. Next up, Equity and Human Rights Commission. Here we have one three-year term through January 1st, 2028, and three applicants: Thelma Brown, Maida Gillette, and Tracy Phillipson. In this case, I would ask that Adrian please call the roll, and we can name who we'd like to appoint.
Kavanaugh.
Maida Gillette.
Jones.
Maida Gillette.
Wethel.
Maida Gillette.
Rousell.
Tracy Phillipson.
Sprank.
Tracy Phillipson.
Farber.
Tracy Phillipson.
Resnick.
Tracy Phillipson.
So Tracy Phillipson is appointed to the three-year term through January 1st, 2028, on the Equity and Human Rights Commission. Next, the Investment and Cash Management Oversight Advisory Commission. We have one three-year term through July 1st, 2027, and one applicant, Lucien Pausian. I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Would Lucien Pausian be appointed?
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Lucien Pausian is appointed to the Investment and Cash Management Oversight Advisory Commission. Two more left. We have the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission, and this is one three-year term through July 1st, 2025, and one applicant, Jason Davis. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell.
I move to appoint Jason Davis to the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
Second.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. Jason Davis is appointed to the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission. And then finally, the Transit Advisory Board, one three-year term through July 30th, 2026, and one applicant, Thelma Brown. Entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Would Thelma Brown be appointed?
Second.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is request to rezone property on Cedar Cross Road.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications, and further move that the requirement that proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones, and a second by Farber. Wally, please.
Sorry. Once again, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wally Wernemach, Planning Services Director. The request before you tonight is to request to rezone property from C3 General Commercial to a PUD planned unit development with a PR planned residential designation located on Cedar Cross Road. This is a map of the property, the vicinity map kind of showing that location. The property in question is actually that area that's outlined by that black and white dash line off Cedar Cross Road. Located to the south of the property is Cedar Lake Estates, a single-family, kind of a mixed-use residential. There's some condominiums, townhomes, and apartment buildings located in that residential subdivision in the south. To the east of the property is the Catfish Creek Valley. To the north, we have some commercial properties, Mallow, Dubuque Sign, there's a veterinarian clinic, and to the west, directly across the street, there are some other additional retail and commercial service-type uses. The site was located in the county prior to 1975, but when it was annexed in the city, it was brought in as agricultural land. If you're familiar with the property, there used to be a single-family home that sat on the site for quite a while, and then in 2013, the property owner at the time came through and asked to have the property rezoned to C3 General Commercial. They were working with a commercial subdivision at that time. It was going to be three large commercial lots. They're going to place a commercial cul-de-sac on the property. That property owner decided not to proceed with that development. again, has frontage on Cedar Cross Road. And it does have some topography. It's fairly level, but then it does drop off fairly steeply down to that Catfish Creek. This is the conceptual layout plan of the property. It includes 180 apartment units. They're composed of six 30-unit buildings. Then associated with that includes a clubhouse. I don't know if you can see my cursor. Does it show up there? Oh, it does. A clubhouse building, pickleball courts. There is a detention basin that'll be located on the site, once again, to capture all the stormwater. The other thing that was involved with this entire conceptual development plan is we take it through our development review team, because we do understand the impacts of a large-scale development on this, on not only the surrounding neighborhood, but then also how the traffic pattern circulations work through the area. So what was required was a traffic study. So that was conducted, and the applicant provided that to our city engineering department. They've reviewed that study, which included a couple of turn lanes into the property, a left turn lane out, and a right turn lane out, and then there's an extended, let me see my cursor here, left turn lane actually coming into the property. So they analyzed the traffic with the increase of not only the apartments, but then also how to exit this safely, and look at that access point on a Cedar Cross Road. Once again, just kind of go over, there are utilities in the area. Once again, we talk about environmental, stormwater review. We had some requirements for trees and shrubs as part of the site plan review process. The site will actually exceed the parking requirements. So in this area, typically, it's 1.5 parking spaces for each unit. They're actually going to provide more than 1.5 parking spaces. And actually, they'll have some garages associated. You might not see them on the plan, but they're actually located in the first-floor portion of the building. And once again, that traffic analysis was conducted by origin design and provided the engineering department for those improvements. Let's meet several goals in our comprehensive plan, which includes integrating future neighborhoods in Dubuque via access to trails, open space, other recreational and educational amenities. We encourage a mix of housing, affordable floor segments of our population, and new multifamily residential development in proximity to jobs. This is a notification map, so we are required to notify all property owners within 200 feet. So I wanted to provide this to kind of show you who actually received notices of this request. So prior to the zoning advisory commission meeting, staff did receive some phone calls from the neighbors. Once it was explained to them, didn't really have any objections. Actually, at the public hearing, we had one property owner at 457 attended that meeting. They had more questions about how the traffic would flow on Cedar Cross Road, and if the turn lanes would impact some of the joint properties. So that was kind of explained at the meeting. So by a vote of five to zero, the zoning advisory commission recommends that the city council approve the request, and a supplemental majority vote is needed for the city council to approve the request. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from Joel Callahan, Callahan Construction, to rezone property at Cedar Cross Road from C-3 General Commercial to planned unit development with a PR planned residential designation. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item this evening?
Hello. My name is Joey Callahan, and I am representing Callahan Construction on the rezoning of this project. Wally did a pretty good job of explaining this. A little more info, the project is set to be subdivided into three separate lots. We're also looking to phase it accordingly, Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3. Hopefully, we are looking at one year for each phase, so a three-year project. Currently, we are working with the city manager's office regarding the developer's agreement and some tech and stuff.
All right. Thank you very much, Joey. Appreciate it. Any other comments on this item? Anything virtually?
Bob and Karen Nepper of 3536 Lunar Drive submitted written input.
All right. Thank you very much, Adrian. All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. Yeah, Ms. Farber.
Wally, I just have one question. Could you explain the traffic patterns? And I know it's phased in based upon what Joey just said, so that will alleviate any immediate concerns about all of a sudden, all of those people living there with, you know, in and out of the traffic into that area. But I know there's some projects for expanding some of the access, and some of the sidewalks, and some of the roads itself. If you could just explain it so that we could have a better understanding, I'd appreciate it.
Most definitely. And using this exhibit up here, if you can see my cursor, just as what Mr. Callahan has indicated, this is actually going to be a three-phase development. And if you can see this dash line here, this long with the two dashes as I trace along it, this will be the first phase. So when we look at a large development light about this, we want to make sure we have the stormwater detention in place to be able to manage the entire site. But also, as part of that first phase, so before even buildings number three, four, five, and six are constructed, these first two buildings, all those off-site improvements will be completed at that stage. That includes that extension of the left turn lane, and then the improvements for the access between things. So timing-wise, this is a situation that those improvements will be done the same time the buildings are being completed, so they're ready day one. So.
Cedar Cross Road would be broadened by that time?
Yeah. They're working within the existing right-of-way width, so yeah. So if you can imagine, making some improvements and kind of reconfiguring and widening it a little bit for that left turn lane, for that access.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones, first.
First of all, I want to apologize to Karen Nepper, who pointed this project out to me before I was aware of it. It was the article in the paper, and my ignorance was not appropriate at my initial response. And I didn't say anything bad. I just said, I don't know what's going on here. Anyhow, I think that her primary concerns were traffic, and through request was that the Cedar Cross Road layout and the traffic issues be figured out before construction begins. And that's what you just told us is going to happen. And that's what almost always happens with these issues. So thank you very much. I think this is an exciting development. I think there's, no one can realistically expect that property to stay the way it is forever. And Mr. Callahan, I want to thank you for bringing a good project that's going to house some people near work and give them an opportunity to grow into community members, and give the community an opportunity to continue to grow. So thank you for bringing the project.
All right, Mr. Jones, thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Yes. Mr. Wernemuth, you talked about recreational amenities. What are the recreational amenities near this project?
So in this case, we're starting, so we don't really have those major apartment complexes that are providing amenities. Typically, you see a lot of larger-scale developments, and it's apartment buildings, and they may be in proximity to existing parks or something associated with that. What we're seeing, especially with this development and some of the other developments you've seen, is they're actually creating those recreational amenities as part of the project. You'll actually hear about one later on another rezoning a little bit here. But they're including pickleball courts, outdoor dog runs, the clubhouse space, and all those other opportunities that are associated with that property. So.
Okay, so they're in the plan itself?
Yeah, they're actually included as part of that plan.
You know, if it's, they're planning two-story buildings, or what, do you know how high these are?
I would rather have Mr. Callahan explain that to you. Specifically, they are multiple-story buildings. We do have a maximum building height of 50 feet. My understanding is, majority of them, they are noted as three-story on the plan. So if you think of a couple of the other buildings that they're constructing right now, directly behind Phoenix Theater on Bee's Drive, they've also constructed some other buildings out in Piastas. So I don't know if Mr. Callahan can explain kind of the layout, but typically, three-story buildings with some parking located underneath that.
Great. On his way up, could you talk to me about lighting and whether or not that's going to be controlled?
Yeah. So in our Unified Development Code, we have a requirement for lighting. We have to control how much lighting is flowing off the site. So we have requirements for 72-degree cutoff luminaires. So a lot of times when we do receive a complaint, it's when someone has placed what we call a wall pack, which is almost like a headlight on the side of a building, and there's not a cutoff luminaire that's associated with it that directs and focuses that light down towards the ground. We also have a requirement that the light alumines can't exceed greater than a one-foot candle at the property line. So there'll be a requirement as the site plan comes through that they have to provide a photometric plan that indicates how their lighting's going to be laid on the site, and how's that going to impact many joint properties. I do want to know, at this location, you can kind of see, it does sit down a little bit lower than the Cedar Lake Estates. They actually sit a lot higher. There is a pretty significant grade change. So when you do talk about that three-story building, you know, the first two stories, you might be able to see, but that third story will pop up a little bit further. And yeah, definitely, lighting will be something that we'll be addressing.
Thank you. So is Mr. Callahan going to, are you able to talk about that perhaps?
Yeah, if you would, Joey. Come on up, please. Appreciate that.
Hello again. Could you repeat your question?
Yes, I was just wondering what you're planning as of now, as far as how high the building's going to be. Is it two stories with some parking underneath it, or is it three stories with parking underneath it, or what are you thinking?
The buildings will be three stories tall, around 10, 11 foot per story. And the parking garages will be on the front side of the building, facing the parking lot, and there will be apartments on the other side of the building.
I see. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Ms. Wethel.
I just had a quick question, and I don't know, Wally, if you could answer. Do we have a bus stop near this space?
So that is a good question. So that is something we're definitely talking with the Transportation Department about, because not only that, but school bus locations. So I did talk with the individuals that live in the neighborhood where the current school bus stop is, and right now, they currently drive into Cedar Lake subdivision to be able to pick up the kids. But at night, they come out and they drop some kids off on Cedar Cross Street, primarily the older kids, not so much the elementary-level kids. But those are things we definitely get involved with in the conversation. One other thing that we talked about, too, is there'll be requirements for sidewalks to be extended across Cedar Cross Road. But when you think about walkability, this is only a half a mile away from a large commercial center, which includes Hy-Vee and Target. So there is a sidewalk that extends all the way along Cedar Cross Road, all the way down to Center Grove Road. There is a section that's kind of missing there on the corner, but then you get back into the sidewalk network that takes you all the way up to Target. So there is some road connectivity there. So pedestrian crossings is something that we might have to talk about a little bit more at the site plan review level. But yeah, as we look at these larger-scale developments, bus opportunities, definitely, especially a lot of times, people who may want to live here may not have a car, or just have that ability to be on a route. And being on Cedar Cross Road, I did talk with Ryan Nuckey, there is a route that goes through that area. And sometimes, as we look at higher density, more people live in an area, those things can definitely be addressed. Talked about that time.
I'm glad you thought of it. Thank you.
Any others? So first, let me say that I'm just excited to see sudden interest in Cedar Cross Road. This is something that I don't think was really on our radar all that much. We've been talking a lot about Central, we've been talking a lot about other places. Then all of a sudden, on both ends of Cedar Cross, we're starting to see some private development. So I appreciate that. I think this is a really appropriate zoning for where it is. Just, it's a great transition point between commercial and residential, and I really like that part of it. So as far as this particular issue, I'm definitely voting for this, and I like this going in this direction, and I appreciate the work that's been done on it. I do have a question, though, kind of thinking ahead. And Mike, this might be a little bit in your direction, too. You know, as we start to see action on a road that we haven't really been, as far as like, goals and priorities paying attention to from a city council standpoint, what does that mean for, you know, Cedar Cross is a pretty wide road, but it also got pretty beat up for a while before we were able to kind of smooth out some of the sides. And, you know, there's a lot of different types of, there's different zoning along it, there's a lot of different uses of that space and those neighborhoods. As we start to think ahead about a lot more, potentially more traffic from apartments, is this something that, from an engineering standpoint, we need to be thinking about in the years ahead for the, you know, the five-year CIP and things like that?
Well, they have looked at the road in the past, and really, it comes down to the expense to rebuild it. And so at some point in time, it'll be recommended in the five-year capital improvement program, but I really don't know what point in time that would be.
Okay. All right. Gotcha. Yeah, I'm just thinking about that as we've started to see more and more interest in the area. But one of the things I do like, I mean, this idea is really catching on of the walkability to certain commercial areas in Dubuque. It's not something that we've had as much before, because there've just been some empty spaces that stayed empty for a while. Callahan Construction is filling two of them, or is planning to fill two of them here, for example, but I think others are too. And it is interesting, because this idea of filling in what we already have and building things within the existing lots that are there, I think is a really good move. And then this idea of adding amenities that Mr. Resnick brought up, you know, really, this is something that other cities have been doing in our region for a while. When I was at an Iowa League of Cities conference in Coralville, actually, so right near Iowa City, lots of student housing, there are some really nice amenities that I kind of wish were there when I was in college at the time, because there are some really nice apartments with some great spaces for people to be able to, you know, gather and enjoy some recreation that's right there on the property. And I like to see that happening here in Dubuque, too. So that's really good. Okay. Hearing no other comments at this point. Then, the motion on the table is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero. Need a motion for final consideration, potentially?
Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero. Need a motion for final consideration, potentially?
Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number three is Southgate Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Second.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Engineer Gus Ahoyes is recommending city council approval of the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated construction cost of $193,600 for the Southgate Drive sanitary sewer improvements project. The existing sewer located along Southgate Drive is damaged in several locations. Sewer pipe defects prevent crews from inspecting or adequately maintaining the existing sewer, increasing the risk of sanitary sewer overflows. The existing sewer is in need of replacement. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council approval of the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimated construction cost for the Southgate Drive sanitary sewer improvements project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Nobody wants to talk about sewers. Okay? Anyone virtually? All right. All right. Back to the table then for any discussion? Got to have a functioning sewer. That'd be my only comment. Seems like a good move. All right. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number four is Fuel Island Rehabilitation Project Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Public Works Director Ariel Swift is recommending city council adopt the resolution of the proposed plan, specifications, form of contract, and construction estimate cost of $1,355,888 for the Fuel Island Rehabilitation Project. In January 2024, during a historical week-long snowfall, the Fuel Island kiosk was rendered out of order due to snow entering the card readers. When trying to replace the current kiosk, the hardware was found to be obsolete. Public Works is recommending a full rehabilitation of the Fuel Island. This will include, number one, replace the three 12,000-gallon underground fuel tanks with three 15,000-gallon underground fuel tanks. Number two, add a diesel exhaust fluid utilization meter. There are no current metrics on this, and it is recharge through the garage overhead rate instead of only utilizing the diesel exhaust fluid utilization meter. Three, replacing the two fuel pumps with four fuel pumps and extending the canopy to include greater overhang. When the Fuel Island was installed, it was created for a fleet the city had 20 years ago. Staff and consultant considered the current fleet, frequency of fill-ups, future fleet expansion over the next 40 years, dimensions of new fire trucks, curbside collection vehicles, and buses to determine the Fuel Island future needs. Four, ensuring the bulk water sales operation continues to be metered and recharge through water distribution operations. Five, compatibility with current fleet management information system software. Six, compatibility to add a streamlined radio frequency identification fuel system in the future without additional rehabilitation. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt the resolution of the proposed plan, specification, form of contract, and construction cost estimate of the Fuel Island Rehabilitation Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Anything virtually?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. Back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Not very many things that we have to work on here at this table are no-brainers. The last one and this one certainly are. Got a lot of vehicles. They're all mission-critical. You all depend on them being ready to go all the time. And not only do you have to fuel some of them up every day, sometimes you're making two or three trips down to make sure that you're topped off, because you might be going on a three- or four-hour mission where you're going to keep burning fuel that someone's depending on you to be able to do. So this is really one of our most critical pieces of our city, is our ability to operate the fleet. And this is the key to the fleet being able to operate. So absolutely, we have to support this.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much. I had a citizen ask me, Mr. Van Milligan, what would the issues be involved if we were to not do this and buy fuel from some of the commercially involved stations that we have who sell this fuel? Maybe not all of it, but if you could talk about that. You know, what would be, you know, what would be the issues if we were to go to some commercial stations instead?
So as you can imagine, a
proposed plan, specifications, form of contract, and construction estimate cost of $1,355,888 for the Fuel Island Rehabilitation Project. In January 2024, during a historical week-long snowfall, the Fuel Island kiosk was rendered out of order due to snow entering the card readers. When trying to replace the current kiosk, the hardware was found to be obsolete. Public Works is recommending a full rehabilitation of the Fuel Island. This will include, number one, replace the three 12,000-gallon underground fuel tanks with three 15,000-gallon underground fuel tanks. Number two, add a diesel exhaust fluid utilization meter. There are no current metrics on this, and it is recharge through the garage overhead rate instead of only utilizing the diesel exhaust fluid utilization meter. Three, replacing the two fuel pumps with four fuel pumps and extending the canopy to include greater overhang. When the Fuel Island was installed, it was created for a fleet the city had 20 years ago. Staff and consultant considered the current fleet, frequency of fill-ups, future fleet expansion over the next 40 years, dimensions of new fire trucks, curbside collection vehicles, and buses to determine the Fuel Island future needs. Four, ensuring the bulk water sales operation continues to be metered and recharged through water distribution operations. Five, compatibility with current fleet management information system software. Six, compatibility to add a streamlined radio frequency identification fuel system in the future without additional rehabilitation. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt the resolution of the proposed plan, specification, form of contract, and construction cost estimate of the Fuel Island Rehabilitation Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Anything virtually?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. Back to the table, then.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Not very many things that we have to work on here at this table are no brainers. The last one and this one certainly are. Got a lot of vehicles, they're all mission critical, you all depend on them being ready to go all the time. And not only do you have to fuel some of them up every day, sometimes you're making two or three trips down to make sure that you're topped off because you might be going on a three- or four-hour mission where you're going to keep burning fuel that someone's depending on you to be able to do. So this is really one of our most critical pieces of our city is our ability to operate the fleet, and this is the key to the fleet being able to operate. So absolutely, we have to support this.
Thanks, Mr. Jones. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you very much. I had a citizen ask me, Mr. Van Milligan, what would the issues be involved if we were to not do this and buy fuel from some of the commercially involved stations that we have who sell this fuel? Maybe not all of it, but if you could talk about that. You know, what would be the issues if we were to go to some commercial stations instead?
So as you can imagine, a commercial station has large volume of use, like we do. And so when they buy their fuel, they get discounted prices. They then charge a higher rate as they sell it, of course, to make money. That's the idea of a business. We buy the fuel at a discounted value, and we charge ourselves the discounted value. So we save a lot of money by having bulk tanks of our own fuel.
And we save much more than the costs that we're talking about here.
I guarantee you, over a long period of time, we do. I don't have the calculation in front of me of how much that is a year, but it's very significant. I don't know, Public Works Director Ariel Swift, is that a calculation that you've done?
Not quite, Wally's height. Ariel Swift, Public Works Director, yes, so we've done preliminary numbers. And so about each quarter, we spend in excess $25,000 or $35,000 purchasing currently over the last year from the private businesses instead of our bulk sales internally. So after about 12 years, this would be paid off, and with a 40-year lifespan, we'd get a lot more out of it.
Great. So about a 12-year return on investment?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Van Milligan.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
One of the key pieces, you know, that's stay up here for me. Again, it's mission critical. In the '70s, when we had the energy crisis, there were lines at gas stations, gas stations were running out of product. On 9/11, when nobody knew quite what was happening, one of the things that happened was lines at gas stations right here in Dubuque, Iowa, and a few of them ran out of fuel. We cannot run out of fuel. We have to have a secure supply that's under our control. So there's no options to this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, these are some really good points, and appreciate your work on this area, and everybody's work in having to deal with the issues since we lost access to this. It's been a real pain. And I say that as a person who hasn't had to go through it directly like you all have. So thank you very much for putting up with it, and finding workarounds that actually worked to be able to continue to use the system in the best way that you could. I think if you have any question at all about how much driving we do in the city, just think about the last few days, and then you've got your answer right there because I've gotten a lot of reports of some really great plowing happening in the last couple of days. So yeah, I agree with this being a no-brainer, a costly one, but something that I think is incredibly important for the work that we have going forward. Okay? The motion here on the table is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes seven zero.
Public hearing number five is Plan Unit Development Amendment for Estates of Dubuque.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell, and a second by Wethel. Wally, please.
Okay. Whoops. Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Oh, we got up on the side, I was waiting for you to show on the side, sir. Wally, we're my plan services director. The request before you tonight is to amend the plan unit development for the Estates of Dubuque. We're looking, they're looking at updating the conceptual development plan and establishing bulk regulations for the property. So some discussion here, let's talk about the current configuration. So this property is located directly adjacent to Rustic Point subdivision. It is the area outlined in the black and white hash marks located on the northern portion of our community. This is a close-up view, so 35 structures have been constructed on the site, some in various degrees of completion. There is a clubhouse building that has been placed as part of that PUD that includes a pickleball court, some community space, I believe a fitness center is located in there as well. There is an off-street parking lot associated with this development. There is a private detention basin located on the property as well. This was the approved concept plan that was submitted with the original plan unit development that kind of shows that lot configuration, so you can see that they are in compliance currently with the existing PUD layout as shown. This is the existing lot configuration, so that area that's located in green composes a clubhouse with a parking lot, stormwater detention basin, and 16 residences. So that's all located on one lot. We have the blue lot, which contains 19 residences and one surface parking lot, and then all those other remaining streets, which are Lot A, Lot B, and Lot C, are all right-of-ways. They're actually improved streets placed on there, but those are private streets, they're not public streets accepted by the city. What's being proposed with this PUD, and the reason for the amendment to the rezoning is a lot configuration that will comprise of taking all these individual homes, which are located on those four lots or five lots, and subdividing them so we have multiple lots, up to 35 single-family home lots. So that area in green kind of shows that area that we subdivided into 35 lots. Each home will be on its own private property lot. Once again, the streets remain the same, and they'll remain as private streets. Lot D is that surface parking lot, and then the area shaded in purple is the clubhouse and the private detention basin that's associated with the development. So with regards to the PUD, when you looked at the concept plan, we get a conceptual plan, it shows us a layout of the lot development of the subdivision. So we have multiple structures on a few lots. So when we look at subdividing it and creating individual lots for each property, we have to have bulk regulations. So these are setbacks from front property line, side property line, rear property line, building height, lot coverage, that's what we refer to as bulk regulations. So we look at this development and say, hey, can we just rezone it back just to an R1 district? Well, when the engineer was working on it, trying to figure out the best lot configuration, there was a few lots that actually were only 38-foot in width, and they covered more than 50% of the lot that would be remaining. The setbacks were 15 feet from the front property line instead of the 20-foot. So there's just some variations from what would be from a single-family residential development setbacks for the bulk regs. And then plus, this has an off-street parking lot that's associated with a clubhouse, which is not normally in a single-family residential development. It might be like a private park or a park that's owned by the city, you might see something like that, but this is unique. So staff indicated that the best zoning for this would be just to amend the PUD and then also just include a new bulk reg table in addition to that subdividing of the property. This is the public input. We do notify all property owners within 200 feet, that's that red boundary line, so everyone there would receive a notice from our office. We do also notify property owners inside the PUD for the purposes of a rezoning. And we had a public hearing, and at that public hearing, we had one property owner at 16693 Clay Hill Road. She just inquired about the ownership of the detention basin, if that's going to remain public or private, and then also some of the excess property that's associated with the property, just that open space area. Both will still be retained and owned by the homeowners association. So by a vote of four to zero, the zoning advisory commission recommends that the city council approve the request, and a supermajority vote is needed for that city council to approve the request. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from Mike Dolcing, Estates of Dubuque, to amend the planned unit development by updating the conceptual development plan and establishing bulk regulations. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item?
Thank you, Wally, and good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Matt Barn. I'm an attorney. I represent the Estates of Dubuque. Just wanted to provide some additional context. This is a unique situation, as was publicized in yesterday's Telegraph Herald by a story written by Mr. Gray. The folks who live here inherited this project from a bankrupt developer. The project currently is owned in a cooperative, meaning all the homes are owned by the same entity. In order to move forward, we need to convert these to single-family homes, so the unsold homes can be sold, the bank debt can be paid off, and essentially, all these folks can get a deed to their home rather than what they have now, which is an interest in a cooperative, which is a much more difficult thing to market and sell. So there's 15 or so homes that are either nearly done or completely done and ready to be sold. Putting this into a traditional subdivision is absolutely essential in order for us to be able to sell those and move forward with completing the development. Happy to entertain any questions the council might have, otherwise, that's all I have for you.
All right. Well, thank you, Matt, for your comments. Any other comments on this item?
I'm Mary Ann Groom. I'm 16693 Clay Hill Road, and just so we're clear, I agree 100% with you guys letting them do this. Our problem and what we have issue with is because none of this has been maintained, we have a lot of damage, not only from this catch basin, but also the catch basin that is up from it, which is actually city. None of these catch basins are being taken care of. So they're all full. They're full all the way up to the first hole. So it catches nothing. I mean, everything just plows down on it, it's taking out fences. We have livestock, so we have horses on our property. So we have a hole that's probably at least as big as right here with our fence just hanging on it because of all the runoff we got because catch basins don't catch anything. So that's our biggest concern, but I think letting them subdivide it the way they want to is a good move on that part. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Mary Ann, thank you for your comments. Other comments on this item? Seeing none. Do we have any virtual input on this one?
No.
Okay. All right. Then back to the table for discussion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Of course, I'm going to support this. It makes all the sense in the world, and way to stand up and take care of yourselves, folks. What a mess you are handed, and I think you've got a solution, and you can see some light at the end of the tunnel, not by anything we did, but by your own good work. So good luck with everything, and the least we can do is rezoning for you. Good luck.
Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So, Mr. Van Milligan, were we involved in a developer, development agreement with the original folks that had city contributions to that development agreement? Did we have any kind of a TIF or any kind of a benefit package for the developer?
I don't recall that was the case, but oh, the city attorney does, though.
With the original developer, which was Rustic Point Estates, we did enter into a housing TIF. But when this portion of the development was sold to Vintage Estates, it was separated from the Rustic Point Housing TIF agreement, which council approved that separation. And so there was not a separate development agreement with Vintage Estates as part of the development of this cooperative.
Okay. Thank you for that information. And in general, when we have a development agreement that we assist with, do we have some kind, how do we test the wherewithal, the financial wherewithal of a developer to complete the agreement in some way to maybe in the future save all this heartache that went into this? Or could you tell us what's being done now, and then...
Well, as the city attorney said, we don't have a development agreement with this section of this development, so it wouldn't have been anything we looked at. But the way our development agreements work with single-family housing developments is it's purely a rebate of the incremental taxes they pay above what the original land value was, and so there is no city funds at risk in any way if they don't, you know, if they say they're going to do a 100-unit subdivision, and our TIF period is 10 years, if they only in that period of time build 60 of those, well, those are the only ones paying property taxes, which means those are the only rebates that the developer gets back. The 40 undeveloped lots, the developer gets no rebate on because they didn't get developed within the 10-year period. So as far as the utilities, though, we do require bonds, and so I don't know, Gus, can you... City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is here, and he could tell you, and this is on every project, it's not just if we have a development agreement with somebody to make sure that they install the utilities correctly in the streets and so things, such things?
Gus Ahoyas, city engineer, yeah, we do require bonds of like 110% of the estimated cost, so we could recover that in every subdivision, so we can make sure that all the utilities get installed as the construction plans.
Okay, thank you. And could you, is there any lesson for the city here that we could have done or could do in the future to maybe, hopefully, not let the situation rise up? You know, you read the paper, and you probably know all the inner details, but is there something we could do to help the situation not happen? That's a weird way to put it.
You know, when a private person develops something, it's, I don't see any way for us to protect from something going wrong in that private business. So I don't, I haven't seen anything like that. I don't have any ideas for that. You know, unfortunately, our community was affected, but this was a developer, I believe, from Des Moines, where there were many communities affected, did multiple developments like this and had a similar result.
Okay, thank you. And finally, do you know, one of those catch basins, the City of Dubuque catch basins, that's kind of a caught basin? It's not really catching anything, or...
So, yeah, so we heard that, so we'll check that out, the ones that were responsible for.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, technically, no at this point, but I encourage you to communicate with us, to be able to ask questions in the future about things. I think, let's keep the discussion going up here, and I think we'll see where we land here, okay? Ms. Rousell.
Thank you. I have a question that's kind of related to the question of the person who lives just outside the area. I wonder, Wally, can you tell me how the HOA, the homeowner association, will have to run to ensure the proper maintenance of the community areas or how that works? I've never been a part of one.
So when it comes to, so this is where it gets a little bit tricky sometimes. So just to kind of feed on to your question, it kind of leads into what Ms. Rousell was saying, is when we get involved with, we control the land use of the property, what it's zoned for, what's the density, how everything gets involved with it. So there's different property ownership structures. So a lot of times, you might hear, single-family owner occupied, could be rental, could be a condominium association typically is where you have common space where you have a homeowner association that's associated with it. In this case, they will have a homeowner association because there are some private portions of the property that require, you know, a group of individuals to be able to provide funding and financing for those improvements, primarily the streets and that private detention. So there is a plan that gets submitted, there is requirements for an erosion settlement control permit and PDS permit, some permits that all go through our engineering department as part of the site plan review process. And then with the ownership of the detention basin, it's responsibility of those private property owners that'd be associated with it. If it was something the city would be dedicated to the city, the city would take over, then we would be involved with that. There are some funding mechanisms that the city does use for maintaining a public detention basins, however, this development is primarily all private in this situation. So it's really up to the homeowners association with the funding and the fee, and then we have received some input from, with regards to the detention basin and comments with regards to it. I don't know if I answered your question.
So if you're a resident, if you're a homeowner in this area, you would know who your homeowner association is, and also a person who lived nearby could contact that person as well, or that group, or whatever? Is that kind of how...
Yeah. You know, one thing about it, when you have a homeowner association, there's usually, and I don't know about their structure, they typically have, you know, elected president, secretary, and board members that are associated with that. You have typically meetings and meetings of the group. They accept fees for maintenance of multiple properties. So yes, I think there is a point of contact with regards to who they can reach out to specifically when there are impacts from the adjoining property to have that conversation.
Okay, so it's not a city function, but people can have access to the information?
Right. And then once again, it's a private matter between private property owners.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay. Wally, thank you very much. So just, just a quick reminder of what we're, what we're looking at here. So this issue that we're voting on for this public hearing is the, the change to the planning unit development amendment and establishing bulk regulations. So the conceptual development plan establishing bulk regulations. There is another item, I believe, coming up to talk a little bit more about this, but there's, the, this particular issue is the PUD aspect of this.
Correct, correct. And that filing, the plat would be the other issue that comes up in the action item. I did request them to be one after another because they are tied together. And that plat facilitated the chain requirements for change to the planning development. So it just made sense to start with the zoning and see if, how that moves before we talk about the plat.
Right, yeah. And I think it's important to remember, you know, in situations like this, first of all, it's really unfortunate, this situation that you've landed in. Everybody hates to see it. And I think that, you know, we don't ever like to see situations, I mean, even just sitting up here, there are some things that are within the city's control and as a city council, we can have some influence on, city staff can help with things like that. There are other things that are issues between private landowners, private developers, things like that. Nobody likes to see anybody have to go through difficulty and pain, so we're sorry to have to see that. What we are happy about, I think, is that we have some aspects of what we can do to try and help. And you've come up with a creative solution here that I think is actually, you know, in develop, in working with our planning department to be able to do something that I think could be a really good fix. So I agree with the folks that have sat up here at this desk that yes, this is definitely something we can move on. Mary Ann, just to specifically address you, well, if you can move just to the left a little bit, yeah. Just, you're going to have a moment to be able to come up again during public input in like two minutes. So you can come on up and say anything else that you like that's under control of the council. So I'll give you that opportunity during public input to be able to do that. Because I think you'll still have some things that are going to be applicable to the issues at hand here. So for this particular issue, though, I do appreciate this solution. I'm glad we found something that we can move forward with so some people, so you can have a little more control over your own situation and your destiny in this particular issue that you've found yourself in. So for that, I think we've, we've come to the end of the discussion on this particular item. Like I just mentioned, we will have public input right after this, so you're able to come up and say anything else you like if there's other things you want to talk about related to this or any other items on the agenda. But for now, the motion on the table is to receive and file and waive the three readings. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Seconded by Wethel.
And a motion by Russell, seconded by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Now is a great moment for any public input, if you have any, so please come on up. And just a reminder to state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Mary Ann Groom, 16693 Clay Hill Road. And I guess this is the first time we've been in on something like this. And when they rezoned this, what I guess I don't understand is how it got zoned to city, but yet the city walks away from it when somebody files bankruptcy. I mean, we've been trying for, what, two years to get some answers? I mean, Gus has been out, John Saville's been out. We've talked to all kinds of people and we can't get any answer one way or another. That's, that's, I guess, what I have the confusion of is how come everybody keeps telling us nobody can do anything? So it's like something like you addressed, that maybe something ought to be set up that a situation like this doesn't happen again because we're not even in this subdivision and we've got all this damage from it. And like I said, they have come out onto our property and they know everything's going on and they can't, they tell us they can't do a thing to stop it. So we've had, what, another year of it continuing? So I just want to let you know that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mary Ann, for your comments.
Hi. I'm Justin Lau with Beazin &amp; Associates, 1212 locust. We are the Estates of Dubuque surveyor and engineers to address the neighbors' comment. We did run some calculations on the detention pond. There has been a lot of settlement due to the non-completion of the development. We have talked with the homeowners association about the avenues that they can do to address this situation. I just wanted to make counsel aware of that.
Thank you, Justin, for your comments. Any other public input this evening? This will be the last opportunity for any public input before the night is over. Okay, anything virtually?
No.
All right. All right, then we can move on to action items, please, Adrian.
Action item number one is final plat of Vintage Estates, number two.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
I got a motion by Jones, seconded by Resnick. Mic, please. Or is it Wally? Mike and Wally together.
I think it's Wally.
Wally, all right.
I might be wrong.
This is unique because it comes from a zoning advisory commission, so typically that comes from them. So to go over once again, the plat that's before you is a reply on the property. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail because I think I explained quite a bit of that with the public hearing prior to that. It is considered a minor subdivision, which is kind of unusual when you look at 35 lots coming through. Typically, it'd be considered a major subdivision because there's new roadways, new improvements, all these things are associated with. Well, those are already constructed. So it's considered a minor subdivision because the water and sanitary sewer and the streets are already in place. So the zoning advisory commission held a public hearing. There was some information that was provided to them. I'm not going to go into great detail. You received the letter that was revolved, kind of had a conversation about Iowa law and platting requirements. That's not underneath your purview, that is something from the property owners when they go to file the plat at the recorder's office. There's a lot of conversation with regards to the entire development. Like I said, most of the commission took a lot of that underneath the existing public hearing when they went through the rezoning for the property. But by vote of four to zero, the zoning advisory commission recommends that the city council approve the final plat of Vintage Estates, number two.
All right. Thank you, Wally. Karna, I think I'm going to come right to you on this one, just to start with. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of legal issues involved here and I think what I could use, and it might be helpful for us as we vote on this, is the understanding of what is within our, our purview in this vote that we're having here and then what isn't. And I think it might help address some of the questions that we're hearing too about where the city is involved and where this becomes a private landowner issue.
So in the input that was received on this matter related to subdivision plats, subdivision plats are governed by chapter 354 of the Iowa code. And in the ask, there was a statement, which is accurate, that a subdivider has to secure written consent of all lien holders before the subdivider may file the final plat with the Dubuque County Recorder's Office. So at the county level, not at the city level. So when you look at a plat and it goes through the process, for anybody who hasn't seen one, there are pages and pages and pages of signatures attached to plats. And all of those signatures have to be on the plat before the county recorder will take it. So the, the ask that the city not approve the plat is not a mechanism within chapter 354 of the Iowa code. The, the mechanism for holding up that plat to get the release from lien holders is with the county recorder's office. And that comes right out of Iowa Code 354.11. So while I understand the ask perhaps, it's not an ask that is supported within the state code as something the city council has any obligation or requirement to do. The obligation or requirement related to filing that subdivision plat is with the county, once the individuals who are filing the plats, so the Estates of Dubuque, go to record that with the county.
Okay. All right. That, that is a little bit challenging to keep up with in that there's, there's just, there are a lot of pieces that fall into place for this to be finally complete and then go to the recorder's office and be signed off on so that everybody has what they need to go home that night. But in our case, what we're looking at here is that this is just the city side of this and saying that we would like this plat to be what it is and move forward with this at this point.
Correct. And the lien holders still maintain their right related to not signing off on that plat.
Okay.
Until they are paid.
Okay. Thank you, Karna. Others? All right, no other questions here. The only thing I would, I would encourage is that, you know, in issues like this, what you see here, we had city staff that are doing their best to communicate. So if you have further questions, reach out to us. Reach out to the city staff to be able to ask those questions and get the answers that you need. Wally and his officer here to help, city manager's office is here to help. I think, you know, our part in this as a city council, from a policy standpoint, is, I think, fairly clear. But the, the questions of who's responsible for what and what happens next and what's the timeline on things, those are important questions and you need those answers. And I do encourage everybody to reach out to the city staff to get the answers that they're able to provide to you. It's not always going to be the answers you're going to love to hear, it's not always going to be answers that they can give you immediately. But I do know that we have a city staff that will do their best to try and communicate as openly as possible. Nobody's trying to, we want to be as transparent as possible in this situation. And I think in, in this case, there are still quite a few questions and I can understand that. Okay. Our motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Action item number two is proceedings to complete action on issuance of $6,420,000 tax-exempt general obligation bond, series 2025A, $8,370,000 taxable general obligation bond, series 2025B, and $8,945,000 taxable general obligation urban renewal bonds, series 2025C.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barber.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Seconded by Wethel.
I caught you right at the end, adopt the resolutions with an S. Thank you very much.
Oh, yes.
Seconded by Wethel. Mic, please.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson recommends city council approval of the suggested proceedings to complete the action required on the recent series 2025A, 2025B, and series 2025C general obligation bonds. Tax-exempt series 2025A bonds will provide $4,846,749 for fire equipment and improvements, $708,332, $32 for airport improvements, $1,143,517 for solid waste collection vehicles, and $129,249 for issuance fees. The series 2025A bond sold at a net premium of $407,848. Net premium results when a bond costs more than the face amount of the bond. The series 2025A bond's average interest rate of 4.33% is higher than the current market interest rates, which results in the bond selling at a premium. The taxable series 2025B bonds will provide $2,105,11 for the fire ladder pumper replacements, $1,152,834 for ice arena dehumidification, $1,077,392 for ABC building deconstruction and federal building renovation, $3,943,887 for parking improvements, and $104,376,000, or $376 for issuance fees. The taxable series 2025C bonds will provide $8,817,651 for Iowa amphitheater on Schmidt Island, and $127,349 for issuance fees. The first resolution appoints UMB Bank, National Association of West Des Moines, to serve as paying agent, bond register and transfer agent, approves the paying agent and bond register and transfer agent agreement, and authorizes the execution of the agreement. The second resolution authorizes the issuance of 2025A, 2025B, and 2025C. The resolution also incorporates by reference the form of the continuing disclosure certificate. This is the final city council action required on the bond issuance. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment as we did previously when Jennifer presented this with the bond agent herself, that these are very competitive rates and that we are quite fortunate to have, from what I understand, oversubscription to the bonds. So I think it just puts us in a nice position and kudos to the team and kudos for the Moody's rating that helped encourage the bidding that we received.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. And so I know a lot of planning goes into these, this work. So all of this was known by our, our bond consultant when she talked about this last time, right? This is all in the pipeline and none of this has since she has talked to us, right? This is all planned and she knew about all of these.
Right.
And she was giving us the glowing reports about our well-deserved rating.
Yes, correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the multiple resolutions. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Barber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0.
Action item number three is Dubuque Gate and Pump Station Flood Mitigation, 16th Street Detention Basin Award Public Improvement Construction Contract.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second. Add a motion by Russell, seconded by Jones. Mic, please.
Thank you. City engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending city council award the construction contract for the Dubuque Gate and Pump Station Flood Mitigation Project at 16th Street Detention Basin through the adoption of the enclosed resolution to ports and construction in the amount of $26,557,106. The proposed Dubuque Gate and Pump Station Flood Mitigation or 16th Street Detention Basin Project involves construction of a new pump station that includes the following four elements. Number one, new flood gates. Number two, replacement of the two existing flood pumps with four new pumps. Number three, replacement and updating of the electrical service to current standards. And number four, installation of a backup generator for the additional pumps to address the needed resiliency being demanded by the storms of recent years. Sealed bids were received on January 28th for the Dubuque Gate and Pump Station Flood Mitigation 16th Street Detention Basin Project. Ports and Construction submitted the low bid in the amount of $26,557,106, which is 4.56% over the engineer's estimate. Approval has been secured from the U.S. Economic Development Administration, Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management, who administers the FEMA grant, and the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, who approves the SRF expenses. The funding plan for the project includes a combination of local, state, and federal funds as follows. A federal EDA grant for $7.7 million. A federal FEMA grant for $7.9 million. A state FEMA grant for $790,000. Sales tax increment for $8,254,445. And the sales tax increment was a grant provided by the state. Stormwater user fees of $1,664,964. DRA distribution of $784,052. And then a state revolving loan fund or SRF loan of $1,452,643 for total project funding of $28,546,104. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
We've been talking about this project for years. Been working on this project for years and worked really hard to be able to get it so, and have all the funding in place to do it. So I'm thankful to our federal partners, especially our, our delegation in Congress in Washington, DC, who helped to make sure that the EDA funding was still... Washington, DC, who helped to make sure that the EDA funding was still flowing as it is it should because we've been awarded it and we need to make sure that we can deal with our flood mitigation issues here in Dubuque. So I'm very thankful that our partners have stepped up to be able to make sure that we can get this done. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is 2025 Healthy Homes Production Grant Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Stager is recommending city council accept and approve $2 million for the Healthy Homes Production Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and retroactively approve the HUD 1044 Assistance Award for the grant. City Dubuque was awarded the Healthy Homes Production Grant in 2022 and applied to HUD in August of 2024 to continue the program. The Healthy Homes Production Grant allows the city to serve low, moderate income residents that need help rehabilitating their home to make it healthier. There are many ways the grant can help make a home healthier, such as mitigating moisture intrusion, replacing windows, and removing trip hazards. The grant can be used in a homeowner occupied or renter occupied structure if the persons living in the structure are low and moderate income. In 2022, the city was awarded $2 million over a three-year period to improve 100 units. This grant ends September 1, 2025. Recently, the city of Dubuque has awarded $2 million over a three-year period to continue the Healthy Homes Production Program. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Danny.
Yes, Mr. Sprank, go ahead.
Thank you. Looking forward to approving this one because of the things that I've seen, working with my neighbors in the north end in the Pointneer neighborhood, they need a lot of help with their homes. And so this type of grant will be monumental. The next item that we hopefully will be approving will also be helpful. So I am very appreciative that our city staff was able to make this happen. And I just want to remind folks, this is sometimes how the federal government helps you out directly. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Yeah, this has been another essential grant for us over the years. Something else that, again, with the federal partnership, federal grant, to be able to do some really important things that are very personal for people here in Dubuque. So very thankful to be able to continue this work. All right. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is 2025 Older Adult Home Modification Grant Award.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Stager is recommending city council accept and approve $1,431,743.21 for the Older Adult Home Modification Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and retroactively approve the HUD 1044 Assistance Award for the grant. The city of Dubuque was among the first cities awarded the Older Adult Home Modification Program in 2021. The program was designed to help residents over the age of 62 safely stay in their homes. This program focuses on changes in the home that cost less than $5,000 but provide a safe environment for those with limited mobility that are low and moderate income. Changes that are made to homes using this program include things such as grab bars, bathtub cutouts, raising electrical outlets, and installing chair elevators. The program requires a certified occupational therapist to meet with the resident and determine the needs in the home to help with safety. The city partners with Unified Therapy Services to complete this evaluation. Once completed, the Four Mounds Heart Program installs the needed improvements and the occupational therapist returns to evaluate the home in its new state to ensure it is safe for the residents. The 2021 award was for $1 million and could only be used in homeowner occupied units. This award ends February 16, 2025, so the city reapplied for funding in August of 2024. Recently, the city of Dubuque was awarded $1,431,743 over a 36-month period to continue the Older Adult Home Modification Program. This round of funding will allow the city to assist homeowner and renter occupied structures. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Ms. Rousell.
Thanks. I think this grant can be really life-changing for people, allowing them to remain in their home. So it's so important and it's good for the homeowner, but it's definitely more than just cost-effective. It keeps them from being in a nursing home or facility and I'm really glad that we can provide this important service.
Thanks, Ms. Rousell. Ms. Wethel.
I truly appreciate the idea that now you don't have to own your home to receive these services because to me, the people that potentially would need it the most are people who are renting in order for them to stay in their space. I also will say, as a healthcare provider, falls are such a high risk for people to be able long-term to stay in their homes. And it takes one fall for that to be a game changer. And so anything that we as a community can do as far as reach out for funding to help with these sorts of projects, not only that, but we're partnering with the heart program. And so it's just a win-win. I'm really proud of this project for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Wethel. There's a lot of discussion about federal grants like this one and things like this at the federal level right now. This is what it looks like. This is what it does in real life, in real people's lives. And it works at the local level. It's not just something that happens in Washington, DC and then doesn't hit us where we live. It actually comes here and helps us stay in our home. And I think that's a really important thing and we've, as a city, done a great job of being able to leverage that partnership and be able to bring those funds here to help people that live in our neighborhood. All right. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Departmental Name Changes Code of Ordinances Updates.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file. I further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second.
I got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Mike, please.
You're coming to me for this one.
Oh, sorry, Kenna. Kenna, please.
Submitted for your consideration are a whole host of ordinances related to changing the names of a few city departments within the city code. The name changes have already been done, but council needs to effectuate the ordinance changes so that they are consistent. They are being made to change or have the names of the departments more publicly reflect the work that they are more commonly known throughout the community. So for example, the Finance Department was previously in the code as the Finance and Budget Department. It's just simpler for the public if we call them Finance. And the now Parks and Recreation Department, previously or historically known as the Leisure Services Department, obviously is much more commonly known as Parks and Recreation. What you won't see in these ordinance changes is the last change, but I just wanted to throw it in here because they were all done at the same time. The Public Information Office is now going to be known as the Communications Office because as you are all well aware, they do exponentially more than just public information. So with that, I am respectfully requesting mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Kenna. Any discussion? Hearing none. Appreciate all the work on this. Motion here is to receive and file, waive the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Next door, council member reports.
What have we been up to? Yeah. Ms. Rousell.
Well, last Saturday, I attended the Dubuque Symphony Orchestra Concert and it was so wonderful. And I think we are so fortunate to have such a quality symphony in our community. And I would just like to add my congratulations to Maestro William Intrelligato, who has recently been named our first citizen. I recently met with Jared McGovern to get an update on the Wanderwood Gardens and I was really impressed to see all the planning and construction that had been done there. And I think it's going to be a fabulous amenity for families in our community. And lastly, I attended the Dubuque County Business Competition at the Innovation Lab and it really showcased some amazing entrepreneurs. So we've got some wonderful new businesses coming into our community and you should be looking for them.
Thanks, Ms. Rousell. Others? Ms. Wethel.
Well, next door to the symphony this weekend, I attended the Bluffs Rodeo again this year. And as I shared with council member Rousell, I had a little eight-year-old who walked away with a belt buckle for riding a sheep. And mutton bustin's the new thing. I'm just going to say, it was really well-attended despite, on Friday, it was a Friday-Saturday event, on Friday, a lot of snow, but it was just a blast and a great example of what can be done at the Five Flags Center. Still very well-attended and a lot of family participation. So kudos to Five Flags, they did a great job.
Fantastic. She's going to be graduating to bowls before too long, so be careful there. All right?
Ms. May.
Yeah.
So I also had the honor of attending the symphony on Saturday night and I agree with Ms. Rousell's comments that it was fun and it was full, considering the weather outside as well. And then I was very honored to be part of the ITC Committee Meeting for National League of Cities, which is the technology committee. And we are actually teeing up our list of advocacy issues for this coming year and we have another meeting at the end of February where we will begin to do our research.
Excellent. Thanks, Ms. Farber.
You bet.
Anything down that end?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I attended a meeting of a pretty amazing group. As you know, Dubuque County has one of the very few regional emergency services training centers that encompasses volunteer firefighters, volunteer EMS providers, professional firefighters and providers, law enforcement at both county and city level. And they're working on their annual fundraiser that helps to operate the facility. This thing was built with some DRA money and a lot of private donations and participation of the city, but we enjoyed the benefit of having a world-class emergency services training center without a whole lot of city investment required to keep it going. So it's just amazing to see this group work together to make this happen. I did the presentation before the DRA that got us the $750,000 that got us up out of the ground right after I retired from the Fire Department. And I told them, and I can tell you now, there's 99 counties in Iowa and there's 98 of them where it probably wouldn't have worked, where the cross-jurisdictional respect and cooperation isn't honed to the degree that it is here. So what an impressive group. We're 20 years now into this facility's concept and operation and it's going strong and it's doing great things for the people of Dubuque and making us all safer, making our emergency services all stronger. And the dinner is going to be Friday, May 2nd at the Training Center. Lot of volunteer labor, a lot of discounted groceries, but basically there's going to be three trailers that are charcoal grills with rotisseries in them that do whole prime rib roasts like a dozen at a time to feed everybody. And it's that, just to come out and see that happen is pretty amazing. Key West Fire supports Darrell Beekler, who donates his services to do that. Key West guys are out there with big scoop shovel, shoveling charcoal all afternoon and making this happen. So it's quite a thing to see at that evening. We also present awards to inductees into the Law Enforcement Badge of Honor Hall of Fame, the Firefighters Hall of Flame, and the Emergency Medical Services Stars of Life. So it's a great evening and a great honor to our services, but the real tribute to them is how well this thing works.
Thanks for that, Mr. Jones. Thanks for that date. Appreciate it. Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much. As we're talking about the symphony, I just want to say I did, the youth are really great here in music as well and they are doing so well. I conducted a Dubuque Youth Symphony Ensemble the day before, actually last week about this time, and some wonderful people. And I'm also the clinician a week from tonight. The schools are having a jazz festival all day, so I get to work with students all day and then have a concert at night and I'm supposed to solo with each group. We'll see how that goes. But anyway, you'll notice that music is really important to our families here in Dubuque. We've got, you know, some really high achieving, but mostly a great spirit about what music can do in your life, not just for the future music majors, which there will be some, but for those who carry on music in their heart all their life, like Mr. Jones, like you, Mr. Mayor, and others, like our former symphony violinist, Lord Rousell. And the others are big music supporters on this council. So I just want to say they're still working really, really hard and they're excited about what they do and Monday is a day for jazz. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. Mr. Sprank, do you have anything?
No, I'm all right. Thank you for asking.
All right. Yeah, you're welcome. Well, before we close up, bringing up the arts, we have some right outside at Washington Park. The Winter Arts Snow Sculpting Festival happened right on Super Bowl Sunday and it's really fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to see it, it was really well-done this year. The winters were absolutely incredible. Aside from that, it's been a little bit quiet because March is going to be a very busy month and I just wanted to catch everybody up on things that are going on. We do have, I'm going to be traveling to Des Moines this week again to advocate on behalf of the city with our local legislators, trying to make an effort to do that this year as both mayor and then also the Iowa League of Cities president. So I'll be there this week. And then again, in March, we have Local Leaders Day in the first week in March, and that is inviting all municipal leaders throughout the state to join us at the state capitol to be able to come together and talk about the things that we do at the local level with our legislators, making sure that they fully understand what that means and what their work means to us as we do that on a regular basis. And when I say us, I mean people who live in the communities of Iowa, in the cities of Iowa. Also going to be traveling to Washington, DC a couple of times, one with the Mississippi River Cities and Towns Initiative, one with the National League of Cities. That's going to be, I think, you know, we see a lot of changes happening in Washington right now, so I think more than probably any other trip that any of us have made to Washington, I think now is a really important time to be there. And I know that we're also planning a Dubuque fly-in probably in May. And then one more thing I want to make sure you're aware of is, I've actually, we talked about the B Branch today and I've been invited to talk about the B Branch again. It's something, ironically, something I've talked about more than anything else in this time that I've spent as mayor and it's been an honor to do it, but this time in Quebec. They've asked to have me as the speaker on behalf of Dubuque to talk about the B Branch project and what we've pulled off here. And I think the main thing I want to point out is that this project has caught the attention of people internationally. They want to know how they can do the same thing to save their city's homes and city's infrastructure from flooding in the way that ours used to. And I think it's really a testament to the work that's been done for just decades on the B Branch and flood mitigation here and also just making it more than flood mitigation. So it's an exciting thing to be able to represent Dubuque in that way. All right. Well, we have a closed session to do a little more work, so I'll understand.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Before you do, I just wanted to point out to people that the Quebec event is, they're sponsoring you, right? They're hosting you.
Yes.
So that's great. And I just want to remind our citizens that all these trips being taken, they're work. I remember our former mayor, Roy Buehl, was sometimes criticized by all the traveling he does, but I tell you what, I went on several trips with him and he was working the entire time, the entire plane ride, the entire time there, even in the taxi. He's working and I'm sure you're doing the same thing. So I want to thank you on behalf of the citizens for all the work that you're doing and all
They've asked to have me as the speaker on behalf of Dubuque to talk about the B Branch project and what we've pulled off here. And I think the main thing I want to point out is that this project has caught the attention of people internationally. They want to know how they can do the same thing to save their city's homes and city's infrastructure from flooding in the way that ours used to. And I think it's really a testament to the work that's been done for just decades on the B Branch and flood mitigation here and also just making it more than flood mitigation. So it's an exciting thing to be able to represent Dubuque in that way. All right, well, we have a closed session to do a little more work, so I'll understand the motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, before you do, I just wanted to point out to people that the Quebec event is, they're sponsoring you, right? They're hosting you.
Yes.
So that's great.